Is Bobby here? I haven't seen a Bobby sighting.
Yeah, it looks like, looks like he's.
Where is he?
He's here.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, so let's get started. Aaron, do we want to go live now for the special called meeting?
We are.
Okay.
We're live.
Alright, great. So, we, I'd like to welcome everyone to the special called meeting here April 13th. Like we did last month, we are doing this meeting virtually. Looks like we've got a whole team of people online. So Matt, if you want to get us started by calling, calling roll.
Yes, sir. Board Chair Stephen Scrutner.
Here.
Vice Chair Denise Adams.
Here.
Board Member Amy Day.
Amy's muted.
Board Member Deborah Hood.
Deborah's muted too.
She doesn't hear. Bobby Welch?
I'm here.
And we have five present, we have a quorum.
Alright, everyone's had a chance to look over the agenda for the special called meeting. Are there any questions about that?
No, sir.
Alright, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I saw move.
Alright, I'll second that. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as is, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Alright, we've adopted the agenda. Matt, do you want to take us to item B?
Yes, sir. This is actually, all we're asking for is permission to, we want to communicate to you guys that we're just waiving the procedural part of this policy, and this is our hardship policy that gives us the ability to relax our district graduation requirements and just holds students accountable for the state graduation requirements. And while we're not applying this across the board, if we do have students due to COVID-19 that aren't able to meet one of their elective requirements, they have the ability to utilize this policy to allow them to graduate. So this is really more than anything, just a communication for you guys.
How many elective credits are kids? Is it seven, still seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Denise, right now, the Kentucky Board of Education is still saying the minimum 22 credit, but they did have discussion last week where they talked about potentially waiving electives as well, which would take- Yeah, it would take it down to 15 credits, but as of right now, they haven't approved that. But if we do have that flexibility, this hardship procedure, I'm sorry, the hardship policy allows us to give exception, but we would use that on a case-by-case basis and not waive all the electives. But if we had a student that was having a challenge completing one of the seven electives, we would consider supporting them that way.
Okay. And who makes those decisions, Matt? Is that made at the school level, or is that made by Office of Teaching and Learning?
We would actually do that at the school level, but we're working with them. So we'll have a list of all of the students and help take them through the process.
Okay.
We want to, we want to make sure that on the backside of this, we haven't caused the student to not meet the minimal requirement. So we're going to work with them, but they'll be identifying those students at the school level.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, Matt, what's next on the agenda?
Okay, the next is two action items. And the first one is a resolution regarding emergency leave due to COVID-19. And this is a, a resolution that is in line with Senate Bill 177, which allows us to, allows the state to utilize more emergency days in the event that we would need those. So right now, you guys have approved three for each employee. But what this gives us, the flexibility to do is if we have a, an employee that is needing to be removed from the work setting due to COVID-19, it gives us the ability, instead of requiring them to utilize sick days, it gives us the ability to utilize emergency days. So we already have a couple employees that this would apply to, that have had to be tested, that didn't come up positive, but they were tested, and it gives us the ability to support them during the time that they're waiting for a response on their tests. So it's my recommendation that you guys approve this resolution as it was drafted by Howard Downing.
Board members, any questions or comments about that?
So, just quickly, so this would allow you, or whomever works, Richard Harden or whomever, to can go through as many as an individual would need, Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
As determined by their position and medical, okay. Good, good.
And what we're going to do on the backside, because you know, I know it's the board's intention to make sure that all of our employees get paid during this time. So if we get to the backside of this, and we have some employees that needed to be out for COVID-19, for whatever those circumstances are, we can utilize these emergency days to support them.
Okay.
Everyone, do you have any other questions?
And Howard wanted me to make sure that everybody understands that it only applies for this school year.
Okay.
Got it.
Alright, do we have Bobby and Amy back with us now?
I'm here.
Okay, yeah, I see Amy's here, I think.
You didn't.
Are you there?
Yeah, I think I'm here.
Okay, we got you. I think Bobby, Bobby may have gotten booted and might be trying to get back in. So, um, I just want to make sure we don't dip below, I see Debbie, you're still here, right?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Um, do we have a motion to approve this action item?
I make a motion to approve the action item.
Okay, I'll second it. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay, that motion passes.
So Stephen, is that a 4-0? Is Bobby?
Yeah, that's 4-0, um.
I'm here now.
Okay, Amy's, Amy's here. Bobby's the only one that might be having an issue right now.
I'm having an issue, but it keeps asking me to rejoin.
Okay.
So, but my vote's yes.
Okay. Let's go with it as 4-0 for now, and if Bobby gets back in, we can always maybe retroactively add his vote in. Alright, Matt, item number two under action items?
Yes, sir. This one is a revision to our certified evaluation plan. And again, this has to do specifically with COVID-19. We, when we started utilizing NTI days, we were really right in the second semester part of the evaluation. So we have certified employees that haven't completed all of the components just due to the fact that students weren't present in the schools. So what this gives us the ability to do is the evaluation plan will stay as it is, but the principals will have the authority for those employees that they feel like there are enough components completed to go ahead and complete it this year. Or if it is, if there's just not enough evidence yet to make, complete a summative evaluation, it gives them the ability to extend the second semester into the start of the next school year, making it due in January. So it just creates that flexibility so that we can make sure that we have a quality evaluation.
How will that overlap with next year's evaluation, Matt? Are people still on a three-year cycle?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is just a quick comment to add. Right before I signed on tonight, I watched a wonderful math lesson by Ms. Butler at Wilmore Elementary on graphing. I'm pretty impressed with it.
That's awesome.
Very cool. Alright, let me check and see if Bobby's gotten back in here. Looks like he is not. Alright, do we have a motion to approve this action item?
Motion to approve. Scott.
Sounded like Amy and seconded by Debbie, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Alright, that'll be 4-0 as well. Alright, so Matt, is that it for the special called meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:14 PM.
I'll second.
Give it to Denise. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Alright, we are adjourned.
Okay.
Alright, now we're into work session, right?
Yes, sir. And I shared, um, this, I'll go and pull it up on the screen so we can see it as well. I shared this with you guys, and there are three topics. One has quite a few bullets. I want to make sure I answer any questions related to COVID-19. And then we have a construction update from Val, and then I gathered some information on elementary interventionist for you guys.
Okay.
If you look below that, it has future topics. Just want to make sure that I'm not missing anything. The one that is really a timely topic is the reducing of the bus routes. We've been doing a lot of work, as you guys recall, and trying to figure out some possibilities. So that's one where we want to do a presentation. Actually, we'll probably try to do that either during the next board meeting, or right at the beginning of it. So that we can talk on all of that. And then you see here on the upcoming events, we have kept the graduation information there, just so you're aware of what we have planned to date. And I know that everybody appreciates the fact that all that could be subject to change. Would you like me to go ahead and jump into the topics?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
First one is food service. Again, so proud of the work that they're doing. As you guys recall, we have made the adjustment to where people are picking up just at two sites. And that's at Nicholsville Elementary and Wilmore Elementary. So what that means is we truly are doubling up the mills. So before, when they came, they were receiving two mills per student. So now they're receiving four mills as they come to those sites. We were hopeful that that wasn't going to be a decline, switching from the 17 sites to the two sites, but we have maintained really good numbers. The first day, we had 5,300 mil served. And I just again have to sing the praises for everyone working in food service. They were going 100 miles an hour, and they're just taking that job so serious as it should be taken. And I just think we have the right people in the right places. I did want to tell you guys too, and Deborah Hood wanted to make sure that we were watching out for the safety of our food service workers as well. And I do just want to confirm to you guys that we've done everything that we could identify in consulting with the Health Department. We are taking every employee each morning that's doing the food service through a screening process. Same thing that they're doing at the hospitals to include taking their temperature. They're wearing, they're washing their hands according to the guidelines. And then they're wearing the gloves and mask the entire time. And then to the extent that we can, we really have stretched out the food production process so that there is as much social distancing. And then we have four separate crews that are working, so they're able to alternate days so that we don't have blended teams in the event that someone were to have a health-related issue, we would be able to know exactly who they were in contact with.
Yes.
I think all that's just great.
I do too.
I like, I think on the other side, those girls need a raise.
Yeah, well, and we did, we had some conversation last week about that. And I talked to Stephen because we really decided it might be easier to not do that as a salary schedule change, just because that could take a little bit more time. And what we're doing, compensating them an additional $2 an hour for every hour that's worked supporting COVID-19 actions. And we went ahead and applied that to our bus drivers as well, and made that retroactive from the very first day of NTI.
Oh, okay. Did it say again, Matt, they're, they're, they're paid for two hours for every hour they work?
No, they're paid an additional $2.
$2, $2.
Yeah, $2 an hour more, whatever their hourly rate is, it's an additional $2.
That's good.
Yeah.
I'm sure that, I'm sure they appreciate that too.
Yeah, and they're earning every penny of it. So, so appreciative again of their work. Any other questions on that one?
No.
No, sir.
Alright, NTI and device distribution. Again, this is probably, more than anything, a celebration, and I'll answer any questions, but we have distributed all the devices. Done a lot of troubleshooting there. I'll encourage Erin Wagner or Michelle Reynolds to chime in on some of the NTI work, but couldn't be more pleased. We did have to make a major adjustment because it really was more of a mentality of maintenance of skills. And we made that strong shift, and it's a lot of opportunities for interactions between the teacher and the students. And, well, actually even opportunities for students to interact with one another. So, so pleased with that, and feel like we're providing high-quality services that we can provide virtually. Aaron, Michelle, would you like to chime in?
Just, I'm just blown away by what the teachers have managed to do and what the administrators have managed to do in terms of this, and getting all this rolling. The only, and I think this is really funny, literally the only complaint, if you want to call it that, that I've received is that I had one parent tell me that they felt like they were over-communicated with. And I thought, well, if that's our, if that's the worst problem that we have, I think that's an awesome problem. So, just lots and lots of communication and interaction, and people getting really creative, even with students that don't have access to internet, and making sure that all students are connected to it. So.
Michelle, Michelle, can I add in one thing, just as a, as a parent getting some of these communications? And I had seen somewhere someone else mentioned the same thing. I don't know if it was on Twitter, on Facebook, or what. It would be really nice if, when these communications are coming out from the school, if they're teacher-specific, if it would show who it's coming from. A lot of times, they're still coming from like a do-not-reply address. And so there's times I've gotten emails, and I've got no idea what teacher it's coming from. Do we have an ability to remedy that?
Even putting your name in the body of the communication, I think, is what they've been doing to resolve it. But yeah, that's a good reminder, Stephen.
Well, it's a, it's a good idea to do that, but it also, you know, it's like this is maybe a one-time where, I understand the need to not, to have that do-not-reply capability, but this might be a one-time where, you know, a parent gets an email and wants to immediately reply to it. And is it going to take the initiative to try to figure out who's that from? Look up what their address is on a separate website, you know? You get something back, you naturally kind of want to hit reply. Just something to think about. Because like I said, I know there's been a little bit of frustration on my end, just getting an email and not necessarily knowing what class it pertains to, so.
I think, and Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong on that, I do know that I have seen some principals sending information to their teachers. I think some of it depends on where the email is originating from. So if they're using maybe infinite campus to generate the email, there's, there's not a way to make it a reply. And so I think there was some instructions going out for them to put in there who it was coming from. So that might have been what part of the problem was. But I think we've got a principal meeting tomorrow, so I think, Matt, we can add that to our reminders to the principals to communicate with the parents on that as well. So I think some of it depends on what source they're using to send the email. Like if it's just their normal email, obviously you would know who it's from. But if it's coming from one of the mass emails, then a lot of them don't have reply built into them. So it would have to be.
Yeah, makes sense.
I'm going to jump into the deep end. Tonight, I received an update from my niece, who's been living with me during this because neither parent has internet. And I've given her a lot of rope. We've done some things just between us, and those I provided instruction. A pretty lengthy list of things that are incomplete on her part, so she's working on those as, as we meet. But I'm wondering about kids I know from a program I work in at my church that I'm pretty certain are doing very little, no internet. I hope they picked up devices because I called all of them and, and talked to them, you know, talked them through Spectrum and some other options, hotspots, those kinds of things. But for those kids that are missing a ton of instruction, is there any way, if, if this crisis were to end this summer, that we can provide any support for those kids academically? Or is that something that we foresee that we're going to be working on in September?
Denise, we are getting CARES Act relief dollars. And we are meeting with principals tomorrow to start that process of brainstorming exactly what we're going to do with students that are behind. And I think there's going to be enough money that we may be able to have a pretty significant ESS program or after-school program.
Okay.
We also are recognizing that we may need to do things very creative. Like if we've got seniors that aren't able to fulfill the requirements, we may have to have a truly very strong summer school that also includes transportation. And we believe initially on the funding amounts that they're giving us, that we'll be able to afford to do those types of things.
Okay.
So, yeah, there, there is a small population like you're talking about. But I'll also say that we are, we set the expectation last week, which is a new expectation because we haven't had to just rely on NTI. But the teachers are, we have a, there's a requirement that teachers are making connections, two-way communications with the students weekly. And they're, they're talking to them about those very things.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, that's, that's one that we've had to be a little bit more intentional to make sure we're.
Yeah, and we have like every, like, so every school and class and teacher and everything, like, there's a log of every single student. And so at this point, this is the first week that we've really done that because it was our first, well, last week was. The first week back from spring break. So this week will be the first week that we'll really be able to go back and see which kids didn't have a contact or didn't find something in. And then there's a process at each school where they get back with the kids and have people that are following up with the kids. So I know last Friday, I actually met, for example, with the EL teachers, the English language learner teachers. So any student that's an EL student that hasn't had contact, those teachers know that and are starting to get in touch with those families. I talked to Shani Marcus, and so she knows which kids are in the homeless program that she works with, that she can get in touch with and make contact. So for each, and then kids that might not fall into any of those categories, then the counselors and the teachers themselves are following up. So I think kids that may have been sliding through the classroom this first couple of weeks when we ran our more traditional role, I think now the processes are in place so that we'll be able to follow up. So our hope is that we'll be able to get as many of them involved and, and as, involved in that as possible. But then as Matt was saying, like my department, we meet every Monday, but the Office of Teaching and Learning met today, and we were already starting to talk about, not in specific detail, but just about ideas for what might summer and follow-up services look like in fall. So we're already starting to have those preliminary conversations and thinking about that. Definitely very much on our radar and our hearts.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions before I go to the next topic?
Okay.
Okay, the next one is budget, and I kind of drifted into that a little bit, talking about the CARES Act relief dollars. So like I said, we are going to be meeting tomorrow, and that's going to be just some preliminary discussion, brainstorming. We've talked about some supplemental services just then, but we are anticipating too that there's going to be additional expenses that weren't anticipated along the lines of the devices. We did, we have sent out a lot of information to parents. We've made a lot of copies, NTI packets, that are being picked up at the schools and dropped off here at Central Office. The, the other thing that we didn't anticipate, and we're curious if we're going to get a little bit more information about this, and we may have to utilize funding for this. We will have likely more students qualifying for preschool services because potentially their parents, you know, are going to be filing for unemployment and will meet those qualifications. So, yeah, we may need to shift some of those CARES dollars to make sure that we're addressing those needs. So we're trying to keep a pulse on all of that. And then I know that this is something that's near and dear to all the board members as well. We, we do anticipate potentially needing to plus up some counseling services for some of our students that are struggling with, with some of this on the backside. So, so those are the things that are on our radar, and we are going to work and get as much input from everybody as we can, our family resource centers, our counselors, our teachers, as well as the administrators, to develop a strong plan so that we can utilize those funds in the best way possible. We don't know, we know how the money's going to be filtered to us, but we don't know the exact amount yet. But as soon as we get all of those figures, we'll get that too. This is a little bit of a celebration along the lines of the budget that I wanted to make sure I told you. I talked to you guys about the equalization dollars that we were not getting. Jessamine County was not getting, along with 21 other districts. And we had discovered that there were eight districts that were getting matching dollars from the state. That was one item that, that made it through the budget. And right now, we are going to be receiving from the state an additional 25% equalization dollars. So what that means to us next year, restricted funds, we will receive from the state an additional $150,000, and this is reoccurring dollars. And then that gives us a approximately $2.2 million in bonding capacity, which is pretty critical as you look at what's on our local district facilities plan. So I think that's a really good celebration that I just wanted to make you aware of.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's great.
And then Jason Fock filed the initial application, and I believe the deadline was today with FEMA. And they allowed us to do just an initial application, not specifying what our losses were yet, but just recognizing that we have some identified. And the co-op is going to, the Central Kentucky Education Co-op is going to work with all the school districts that have followed that, to help take us through that process. We have some superintendents that have had to do that for tornadoes and such. So they're going to help work with us to make sure we're doing everything that we need to do. But I wanted you guys to know that Jason's already taken that initiative. And then the only other thing I was going to communicate budget-wise is that the other items that had budgetary implications that would go to you guys as action items, I was going to hold off on. I was planning on taking it to you this month, but felt like we would probably have a much clearer impression of some of the implications if we wait a month. None of these items are required items that would slow anything down. But just feel like with all the uncertainties, it may be. But uh, just feel like with all the uncertainties, it may be wiser for us to not uh, move on any of the uh, big uh, budget action items until that time. Are you guys okay with that?
I think so.
Sure.
I'm going to take you back to screen. Uh, the next item is uh, out of state trips. And I, I'd spoken to Steven and he wanted just a little bit more information on uh, the DC trip. So I was going to ask Val to talk about that piece if you could, Val.
Sure, be happy to. Um, as most of you are aware, the um, well, you may or may not be aware, but World Strides has determined to go ahead and refund everybody's money back, even those who did not purchase the trip insurance minus, minus a hun- a hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is what the cost would have been if they had gotten trip insurance. So in other words, if I spent nine hundred dollars to go, I would receive seven hundred and seventy-five dollars back. That way it's kind of similar to the hundred and twenty-five that all those who had already purchased the trip insurance were doing as well.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I think that's more than fair.
Because we were worried they weren't going to get anything back at all.
And, and I think for the most part it's been more, it has been received okay, but there are, there are a handful of parents that that has frustrated. However, I do believe it is a fair offer back from the company.
Yeah.
I do.
Yeah, and, and I, I'll share what I told you. Sorry, go ahead Debbie, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay, go ahead. I was just saying that I spoke with a parent who had gotten that letter and she was extremely happy that they were going to get most of it back, so.
Yeah, I, I, I've heard from a couple of parents who were on the other side and just questioning, you know, why they're keeping any money at all. I mean, you know, for me, it's not that big of a deal, but I can certainly understand someone else, you know, wondering why they're keeping certain money at all. I mean, my question to Matt was, what would World Strides have done had we not canceled this trip and simply said, no, we're ready to send our kids in 10 days? And they wouldn't have had any locations they could actually take the kids because they're all shut down. So at that point, you know, if the, if the onus had been on them to produce, what would they have said then? Because at that point, it would not have been fair at all for us to say, no, we're sending our kids and then them go, no, there's nowhere for them to go, but we're going to keep your money anyway. So.
Yeah.
Um, but I feel like if, if you guys aren't hearing a lot of complaints at central office over it, uh, I've gotten, like I said, just a few texts and calls here and there, nothing where anyone's, you know, outraged. I mean, I think that given what's going on, frankly, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five dollars is relatively small potatoes with everything else. So um, if, if the waters are calm, let's move on from it.
Yeah.
I will, I will let you know, I went back and looked at the number of people who did not buy insurance on the trip and it did total a hundred and twenty-two people or a hundred and twenty-two individuals. So a hundred and twenty-two individuals were at risk. Well, they were at risk of possibly not getting anything back. So I'm looking at that as being a significant amount of money that the World Strides is willing to hand back, minus that one, one twenty-five.
So how do we look at the, how do we look at this in the future? I mean, do we need to change some kind of policy about this or?
Well, if I'll speak, I know Matt, you want to speak to it, Matt? I know you had talked about it earlier.
Yeah, it, I, I think one thing that we need to do on these larger trips is in discussion with the companies, look at insurance, including it in as a package deal overall. Um, and, and make sure that it's covering these types of situations too. Because I think if we guarantee it with everyone, it'll probably drive the price down uh, uh, for tho- those that would have purchased it uh, singly. So, so we'll do some exploration there so that hopefully we don't have parents in the same situation in the future.
Matt, the only thing I'll add to that though is I do, I do feel like these were two different types of cancellations. Um, you know, as we discussed, there's the cancellation where kids signs up in September for this trip. Something happens, dad loses his job, uh, Donnie wants to play in an athletic tournament and not go to DC, whatever it may be, and the cancellation is truly on an individual basis for individual reasons versus something like this where it's a pandemic, there's nowhere for them to even take these kids next week if we had been able to go, uh, or if we had not said we're canceling, you know, there was nowhere they could take these kids. Uh, this was a, a completely unique situation. I mean, I, I could willingly argue that they should not have kept a hundred and twenty-five dollars, but it's not really worth it. Um, but I don't know how you draw a distinction between uh, an individual cancellation and a strict wise cancellation.
And, and we can do some exploration and I'm going to guess we'll see different types of plans moving forward now that this has occurred. But yeah, point well, well taken, Steven.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Howard is saying it, it, we may find also that the company, the insurance companies as well as uh, uh, the travel agency finds out that they get to recoup dollars from the federal level, which could then work their way still back down to uh, our, our families. And uh, I'm, I'm hopeful of that as well. Okay, on to the next topic. Uh, you guys wanted me to uh, uh, just do some additional, uh, have some additional discussion and, and talk to you guys a little bit about our homeless students? Because I do know that uh, uh, this is a population that uh, if we don't keep a, a watchful eye, we can uh, sometimes have some students in some pretty tough situations that are hard to overcome. I can tell you that uh, Shani has been doing uh, incredible work here, uh, doing a lot of uh, distribution of food, a lot of distribution of devices, NTI packets, just check-ins. When she has gotten a little bit overwhelmed with some of this, uh, we've been utilizing Family Resource Center coordinators to support those students as well. Uh, we have uh, uh, staying in touch with them as much as we can. I know some of that is even, uh, she, she's uh, still visiting some of those homes and practicing social distancing, but just checking in. So I don't know if there are any specific questions there, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that we are uh, uh, trying to uh, keep a very watchful eye on this population of students.
Absolutely.
Just a quick, I, I talked to her last week, just, she's been contacting me about like individual situations. So she's not only keeping an eye like holistically on it, but like there were a couple of situations and with like um, a student who, the one of the NTI um, assignments was like a cooking assignment. So she was brainstorming with me. It wasn't like a, let's get them out of the assignment. It was what other types of things could they do instead of that? So it was just a really good, um, again, she's not doing a blanket overall for, you know, all students meet this or all students, she's just looking along with her teachers and administrators, um, a very individualized, you know, kid by kid kind of basis. And she's got a lot of kids, so to be able to do that down to the level of the kid by kid, I think so is a one.
Yeah, normally a cooking activity would be a good thing for them to do, but this student was living in the hotel.
Right.
So that's why that was, yeah.
Little bit of a challenge.
Is, does anybody know what's going on with what I would have called the Sherry Stewart program? I think it's now the Laura Barnum program. Is, is she doing similar work as Shani with her students?
Um, I can talk to that a little bit just because Sam Gottler gave me an update on that. It's the home hospital for students that are in home hospital services. Um, actually, they are, um, yes and no. Um, they're supporting them because the idea is that their assignments, um, sorry, I'm trying to process and think back to what she said because it was last week when we had this conversation. But um, they are aware of what their assignments are and then they're just supporting them with the assignment as they come from the classroom. So if anything needs to be modified or changed because of their individual circumstances, then um, they're doing that. But then they're also just supporting them with uh, completing the work. And in a lot of ways, for a lot of these students, this is um, kind of similar to what some of them have been doing anyway with distance learning. So um, in that case, it's not that big of a change for some of them, although I do know some of the assignments had to be modified um, or adapted a little bit, which is kind of what they do anyway, so.
Yeah.
But Denise, they have stopped the uh, direct contact, so it really does have much more of a feel of our NTI classes.
Right, right.
Uh, on to the next topic, uh, calendar plan. So, so this one that I'm going to bring to you guys uh, as quickly as I can, and that's how we want to modify the calendar for the rest of the year. This is one that uh, does take board approval. If I have enough information by the board meeting, which I'm really hopeful that I do, I'll uh, give you guys a proposal for how we finish out the rest of the school year. Uh, some of that is, are the biggest part of that obviously is contingent upon uh, the flattening of the curve with COVID-19 and how uh, the governor uh, reacts to that. But uh, given our current situation, we are expected to uh, transition back to school November, or I'm sorry, May 4th. Uh, if we are told that uh, it's by the governor that it's not a recommendation to uh, bring students back, we will have met our legal requirements uh, for a school year by May 8th. So what I'm going to, what you can anticipate receiving from me is a recommendation to not go, if it's NTI all year long, to not go all the way up to our last scheduled uh, 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 day of school, but uh, to end it a, a bit earlier, uh, knowing that we've got a, uh, e- everything takes longer now. So we want to be able to uh, pick up our Chromebooks from students, be able to put in grades, be able to do all of the stuff that needs to be done that has just gotten much more challenging because uh, of uh, the distance learning. So again, I, I want you to know that uh, a recommendation is coming. But I've also said to the principals, if we do finish NTI early and the governor does indicate to us that we can potentially come back before the closure of the school year, uh, even if it is a week, I, where my heart is right now is bringing students back for that final week. It may not have as strong of a academic value, you know, there, there will be some benefits. But I think uh, all of the other things, the, the celebration that we've made it through all of this, the opportunities for students to connect, the opportunities for the celebrations that occur, uh, the field days, the opportunities to uh, uh, connect with the staff, all of those things that I think bring closure to a year. Because you know, you just think of how challenging it will be for a senior to not ever get to step foot back into the school, for an eighth grader to never get to be at uh, East Middle, the Providence School or uh, West Middle again. So uh, I know that you can argue the academic value if they're just back a few days. But again, I think there's a whole lot of other benefits that, that they'll gain from that. So uh, that's where my mind is right now and really I'm, I'm waiting like the other superintendents on hearing what uh, the governor's uh, uh, next recommendation is. But if, if I have enough information to bring a proposal to you guys, I will. But know that with the new changes that we have with Senate Bill 177, uh, we could finish school as early as uh, May 8th. We will, we will have fulfilled all of our obligations.
I agree with letting them come back, if even for a week, Matt. It's, I think it's, it's, it's a part of the healing process, like you say, a move forward. Yeah, I second what Bobby says.
Yeah.
Good, I'm, I'm glad we see that the same and I, I think the kids will be appreciative.
They will be.
Yeah. It, it'll be the first time you hear me say, take a one-hour recess.
Yeah. Parents may call, rise up and call you blessed, Matt.
Might be a first.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then uh, graduation ceremonies, um, a- again, we don't have decisions on that, but uh, I, I do want you guys to know we're carrying on conversations and we're going to make that. You know, our, our plans are, are to have that at Southland, but we are uh, planning uh, contingencies. Uh, we are uh, doing the right thing in meeting with uh, student bodies, uh, or meeting with uh, student councils at uh, Providence, East and West High, and we're going to get some input from them tomorrow. And then uh, after we get that input, we're going to see what we can turn it into with our administrative teams. And again, that's a backup plan in the event we're not able to uh, do the ceremony at, at Southland. And uh, we'll, we'll uh, bring a proposal to you guys just as quickly as we can on that end. And then the only other thing that I have uh, for uh, COVID-19 is a testing site. Uh, the state has halted their uh, uh, COVID testing uh, accor- uh, uh, for whatever reasons, I think they're uh, still working out some of those bugs. I know they did a pilot in Frankfurt, uh, but they're not moving forward that uh, phase uh, two yet. But we were contacted by the health department and they wanted to uh, go ahead and do the same operation that uh, we had coordinated with the state. And it'll probably be just a single day a week, uh, but uh, doing it on our campus. And uh, again, we uh, said we were absolutely comfortable with that because they truly are trying to find a location where they can get all the traffic off of the main roads. Uh, it would be completely managed by the health department and all of the traffic and everything completely handled and managed by uh, the Nicholasville Police Department. So I, but again, I wanted to make you guys aware because I know that you guys were wanting to make sure we were supporting the community as much as we could at cost.
Appreciate it.
And uh, subject to your questions on COVID-19, I'm going to hand it over to Val, who's going to be talking to you about construction.
All right, Matt, are you presenting the two documents?
I'll pull it up right now, Val.
Can you hear me, Matt?
Uh, yes, I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay.
Uh, first one, do you want uh, Providence School or what CTE?
Pick whichever one and I'll talk to it.
Okay. I've got you.
Okay, I'm struggling, my, my internet must be slow. All right. Which one did you put up, Matt? I'll just talk to it.
Uh, CTE.
All right, so if you look at that, so if you look at the document there and if by the way, my voice goes out, please let me know. Um, this was actually from the last board meeting, we didn't have time to go through it. These days, both of these projects are on time. It's been really nice with the COVID-19 to be able to get some work done without any interruptions or worries or concerns about interfering with the school. Um, they've been able to get on top of things and continue to move on at East Jessman High School. They are, they are completely finishing up on the inside a lot of things. You'll see pictures on the back of this document showing you um, some of the changes. Does that have, the, some of the changes that are occurring, you will see in the top left-hand corner on the pictures, the exterior part of the left-hand of the um, CTE on the back of East Jessman High School, the actual door frame that. It's the pre-law classroom where they're actually going to have a courtroom. You're looking straight on, you're looking straight on at where the judge and the reporters would sit and off to the right, the jury box that will be able to be used by Will Hall and his program for pre-law. And that has been really, that's been really exciting to see that work um, come together. Those are the only two pictures. Oh, and you'll also see in the upper right-hand corner, the food service equipment in the culinary classroom. That particular room will rival any uh, restaurant. Always find anywhere city, probably anywhere in the state just for instructional purposes. It is A1, so once that's finished, it'll be exciting to be able to share that out. But that should be able to be completed. Uh, um, they should be at a, at closeout documents on the new addition over the next two, three weeks, getting a lot of that and start doing punch item lists there at East High. At West High, the CTE addition in the back. Finishing up and starting to work on the individual partition classrooms in there and building it out. Uh, later on this week, we'll be able, we will be hopefully meeting with our, uh, electrical engineers, the architects and, um, Danny Clark with, uh, Clark, uh, Cool and Die, and starting to look at the machining room where they'll have the big CNC machines and the big machines for our advanced manufacturing and making sure we have everything in there that we need to get that program off the ground and moving. So, the CT edition is really moving. You'll see some pictures there as well. Um, down on the right-hand, bottom right-hand corner, they have all the curves and gutters and everything in place in the back. All they'll be looking at at time is finishing up the, the islands as well as the, the paving. They work for the parking lot, they drive in front, they drive around the back. Up in the front part of the building, you'll see a picture in the middle right-hand column. That's actually standing in the front office looking out into the front parking lot. They have pretty much everything under roof and much of the heavy work done in there except for the pouring of the front steps. And they actually started those at the end of last week and are continuing this week to have all of the stair work and all of the cement work done before the end of the week. And then they will begin to do front glass and everything else there. What you see in the bottom left-hand corner is where the bathrooms are going to be, the new bathrooms that they had to tear out for the front office. This is actually, if you remember from the West High cafeteria, this was the back hallway entrance into the cafeteria. They had been used all year long. It's the only way for our kids to get in. They've been able to cover that up and start to dig out and put the bathrooms in place, hoping to be able to get that work done as well. That used to be the, uh, like atrium looking over the courtyard there in the back. You can see that picture. Uh, but the front office is underway and they are still moving forward with that. They will be starting to work on terrazzo floors, I think at the end of this week, which will be really nice to start seeing some finishes, all the drywall is up and everything else in there. So the kitchen equipment, uh, in the new kitchen is basi- is being installed at this point. So all the flooring's done, the walk-in coolers are installed, um, the ceiling tiles in place and everything else. And so hoping that we can have some work on that kitchen. The idea will be to have that kitchen done and operational sometime by the end of June at the latest. They do talk about some pending change orders, but you all took action at that at the last one. There is only one thing that has come up since then that I want you to be aware of. Through working in the courtyard, they have discovered that one of the roof drains that drained underneath the courtyard was crushed. And we ended up in storm last weekend, having water back up in one of the hallways because we did not realize. But they think that that storm drain has probably been crushed for 20 to 30 years. The difference was there was some green space in that courtyard prior to it. So it would run in and kind of filter out through that green space. But now that we've taken all the green space out and put cement in, in there, um, there's no place for that to filter out. So now that water's backing up. So they're looking at a way to fix that problem now. So I'm sure I'll be coming back to you all with that a little bit later. Does anybody have any, anybody have any questions on the CTE project?
I don't. I don't.
All right, Matt, if you want to pop up the TPS one. I, I will tell you from the TPS standpoint, it's moving better than we thought it was going to. I'm just going to kind of give you an update. They had said that the substantial completion date was supposed to have been last Friday. They are off on that, but are, will be done by the end of the month with everything interior-wise. Now, there will be some exterior work that still needs to be done. Um, but I am not as concerned about the exterior piece. They have been working on it, but that's not crucial for us to be able to get our people in and start to set things up. Um, as you see there, as Matt's going through it, you're starting to see some of the addition exterior where that bottom left-hand corner is there where they show the front of the building with missing side, with missing siding. That's all done and that's all painted at this particular point. Um, so the only thing it's missing is there's some work on the very back of the building that faces towards where Sam's is. There still has some work to be done there as far as exterior siding, but it's all... There's a lot more being done here as far as the in- addition in the interior.
Did we lose him?
Maybe.
Did you lose me?
We did, yes.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Um, it's a little flaky right this minute. Um, all the drywall is done. They're starting to get all the casework in, in the building. The ceiling tiles are being dropped and the flooring is down on the first floor or on the second floor, and most of it is down on the... Starting to put ceiling or floor tiles in. You will see continued, continued down with the additions, interior. They're just doing finishes at this particular point. Um, a lot of what you're seeing here is well outdated, we're a couple, couple of weeks out, almost two and a half weeks beyond this point. So keep going there, Matt. Uh, I wanted you to see this picture. Uh, for those of you who have been at TPS upstairs, you see in that top right-hand corner, the little nooks, that's actually in the media, media center. The little reading nooks that kind of go out into those spaces. Um, and that's gonna be really cool, the way they have that laid out in there. Those are all completed up carpeting and everything. Bottom corner is sealing for, or a sealant or, uh, insulation in the crawl spaces underneath the building, which will make it a lot more enter... A lot of finishes there on the main entrance going into the office area as well. Uh, outside work, there is still a lot of work to be done on the outside work. I'll just, you at this point, there's still quite a bit of work that needs to be done in that back section. Um, to be able to finish out that courtyard area and then obviously planting trees and all the grass and everything else that needs to come in. But as far as the interior part, we are good. We've got the furniture coming, the week of May 18th to be installed and therefore getting everything set up so we can go ahead and get, um, TPS staff moved at the end of Mar- end of May, first week in June. Any question?
Before school starts, that the exterior will be finished and...
Oh, yes. Yes, that, that, that should be noted. I'm sorry?
How soon, can we go through it?
Well, you can go through it now if you'd like to be able to see any of it. But as far as seeing it from a finished point of view from the interior, I would wait till the first part of May.
Okay.
But at this...
They vow, they vow, in, in terms of calculations, uh, we may, I keep asking this question. We still may be too early in the process, but, you know, where are we in terms of trying to calculate, um, you know, some recourse for these delays?
Well, I will, we have kept up with, and I've asked Jason over time to kind of keep up with energy costs that are causing us to be, uh, having to basically heat two buildings or cool two buildings at that particular point, which is really one of the major costs that we have had, being able to upkeep, as well as any kind, and I've had John Clemmons, being able to maintain, excuse me, being able to maintain a list of upkeep items that we've had to do with the TPS building itself, the one that they're currently inhabiting, because we would have been out of that building in time. So that's really what we're tying it to.
But, but Val, what about just the general fines that could be done?
Well, there's five, there's 500, I think it's $500 a day, based on the initial substantial completion, which is November...
But it was October 24th.
Well, but, but we approved it to go a little bit further because of the conditions that were found with the walls. We backed it up to the middle of November. It was like November 11th or 12th, and that was...
I was gonna say, yeah.
It was, but that was the only action we took on it to back it up. Everything from that point has been a result of the contractor. So you're looking at four, five, five months' worth of substantial, so 100 days.
Wow. That's perfect.
I mean... What's that, it looks like 50, 50, 60,000 dollars? Hello?
Yep, that sounds correct to me. Yeah.
Yeah, sounds right.
And, uh, I haven't seen the figures, uh, for, uh, it, it operating off of the two locations. So it'll be interesting to see that piece of it. But, but yeah, that, that's the information that, uh, Val and, and John are gonna gather so that we can have our discussions on the backside of this.
Okay. And, and Matt, I know we've talked about this a couple of times over the months. Or, or assuming we do come in with a number, let's just, for the sake of argument, say we've got roughly $60,000 in fines we could issue to, toward. Um, I know you've expressed an interest in going more toward the route of make goods where we could look around the district and see things that need to be addressed, um, that they might be willing to simply have a crew go over and fix a sidewalk, repair this, repair that, as opposed to coming out of their pocket. Uh, are, have we started some discussions or, you know, kind of compiling like a ranked order list for that?
I don't think we've done it as intentional yet, but I know we've identified some, uh, items that we, uh, wished we would have, uh, done a little bit more, something a little bit different, uh, with our career in technical education. So we do have, we don't have necessarily the, the list like you're, uh, referencing, but that's something I can definitely work on.
Okay.
And, and examples like an additional sidewalk at, uh, East High that wraps around the football field and things like that.
Right.
And that's exactly the way we've handled this in the past. Uh, the, the way you, you, you referenced, Stephen, where we just talked to them and said, okay, here's where we are. Let's, let's see where we can go with this.
Okay.
Um, has the city of Wilmore had anything to say about the delay, Matt?
Uh, we are letting them, uh, coexist, uh, you know, and, and, you know, um, Mayor, Mayor Ringwater's just a, a good man and he understands our situation. So, uh, we, but we are letting them co- coexist so that they can start doing some of their summer programs. Because obviously when summer's there, we're not needing the gymnasium and, and the cafeteria like they're wanting to utilize it. So, so we're gonna be as flexible as we can for that transition. Uh, I will tell you, uh, we are not exactly sure what we're gonna leave in there yet, uh, furniture-wise, because, uh, uh, there, uh, we want to make sure we've got enough furniture in our, uh, new renovation, uh, renovation, when we hand all that over.
Providence have some say in that?
Excuse me?
Will the public have some say in it?
The, the plan is to give them all brand-new furniture, so they're getting everything behind. But Val had recognized, I'm speaking for Val, because I don't know if he's on.
I am.
Oh, you, you wanna go ahead and talk to Plan B in the event we don't get the furniture in?
Yeah, let me talk a little bit about that. We had decided on a company to do the furniture for the CTE program about two months ago. And with this whole COVID-19, uh, stuff going on, one of the issues we're running into is many of the manufacturers that do the furniture have been repurposed to do other work. And so getting a hold of all furniture may be a little bit difficult. So what we're doing is we're identifying in our current furniture, uh, purchasing, what items we'll be able to get without any issues and what items may be an issue getting in time. And then looking within TPS to temporarily find furniture to deal with that until everything kind of works itself back into more normalcy, so...
Yeah, so, so really it would be a temporary, that furniture, if we have to use it, because we know new furniture's coming, but we don't want to hand over all our furniture and then realize we've gotta wait a couple extra months.
Okay.
So any other questions on construction?
We're good.
Okay, I think the only other one, and I think this is more informational, so I'll answer any questions you may have, but if, this is one you may want to study a little bit more and come back to, but, uh, this is, uh, elementary interventionist. And what I did is, uh, just had, because, uh, I, I just had the, the principals identify, uh, the interventionist staffing that they have at their schools. And I think you guys were just wanting to get a clear picture of that. Oh, I'm gonna, I wasn't sharing. I'm, I'm gonna share, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I wasn't sharing. Do that again. And, and this is along with the, uh, construction documents that Val covered. This is in your, uh, archive folder, if you want to look at it a little bit more. But this is really broken down by school and it, again, it's specific to the elementaries. And it has the, uh, all the interventionists that are tied to reading, math, or behavior. And, uh, that's in the center column, and then you see the, uh, funding that supports that in the far right column. And if you look by the name, you see the overall number of interventionists that they have, uh, equivalent, uh, full-time, full-time equivalent staffing. So what they have is comparable to 4.1 teachers at the village. And then if you move down the line, you'll see similar. Brookside has 3.8, Nicholasville 3.1, Red Oak 6, uh, Rosenwald 5, Warner 4, and Wilmore, uh, 4.5. Uh, and the difference in that really is tied to, uh, site base as well as, uh, a couple of other variables, uh, such as Rosenwald wrote, uh, two, uh, grant, or grant to receive additional staffing. Um, overall numbers, if you just look at the elementaries, it equates to 29.5, uh, teachers or full-time equivalent interventionist. And then what you guys, um, had, uh, approved as a next step is an additional .5, which would then bring, uh, the commitment that was made to this, uh, population of students to, uh, three-point, additional 3.6. So, uh, again, this just gives you a, a sense of, of where we are right now with this. And Denise, I'll, I'll say, you're probably looking at this saying, I don't ever remember seeing something like this, uh...
Yeah, I know.
This is one that, you know, we have worked very hard on. And when I've talked to you guys about, um, Michelle Reynolds pushing a lot of the, the, uh, allocations directly to the schools, when I talked to you guys about us taking some of that funding away that was tied to, uh, central office, uh, positions and pushing that there. Uh, when we've talked about, uh, uh, the, the additional, uh, staffing that, uh, you guys added last year, you'll see that it, it really is a very large, it's made a, a big impact.
Huge.
Schools and, and you guys don't get to see those numbers pulled together like that, but that really is a reflection of the commitments that you guys have made. And, you know, when we talk about, uh, being pleased with our primary, uh, students reading, uh, I think, uh, there, this is a direct reflection of, 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 of some of that. You guys have put the resources in the right places so that, um, uh, students can get the support they need.
Matt, the one thing I'll say about this though is, uh, the imbalance in this is noticeable. I mean, for Red Oak to have six, while Nicholasville Elementary gets 3.1, um, you know, Brookside with 3.8, uh, i- it's a variance across the county that I, I guess I really don't understand in terms of, you know, when you go to one school and they've got five or six, now granted Rosenwald's got the, the grant, um, but it would seem like schools like Brookside and Nicholasville should have more interventionists, frankly, just given some of the challenges they face with their populations. Uh, am I off-base in saying that?
Kind of based on the population itself, though?
Yeah, some of it is based on the population. They receive some of the monies, uh, uh, based, like our title monies, uh, uh, based on the population. But then really some of that is the decisions that the schools have made. So if you look at a school that has, uh, a, a smaller number of interventionists, then their site base and their administration decided that they wanted smaller class sizes to address the needs. then their site base and their administration decided that they wanted smaller class sizes to address the needs. They, you know, they sit down and typically will look at those population of students and try to make calculated decisions based on that population. So again, they could all have the exact same amount. But I think in their discussions and when they look at the specific students' needs, they've developed plans that are specific to those. And Michelle, would you like to chime in there?
Just the, yes. I mean, I think, I mean, every school could make the decision to have five or six. So there's a reason why each of those individual schools have chosen. So in some cases, well, first of all, Nicholasville has fewer students than our other elementary schools by a significant amount. So Nicholasville's, you know, numbers are going to be less. And then I also know that Nicholasville has done a lot of stuff. And I'm just using Nicholasville as an example. We have several schools that have done the same. Most all of our schools have done the same thing. But they have done things very specifically in the classroom to minimize the need for outside interventions, if that makes sense. So they're doing more in the actual classroom instruction itself. So for them, some of their decision-making and for some of the other schools has been around what resources to be pushed into the classroom so that kids don't actually even need pull-out intervention on the back end. So that's a decision that individual schools are making.
And that's a really good point. And I think that that'll be helpful too, Stephen, to hear this because like Nicholasville Elementary has connected more of their resources with instructional assistants that they're keeping in the classrooms, which give them the ability to kind of do a similar thing, which is to, you know, they can break down and have some smaller group activities for the reading and for the math, as opposed to having the interventionist where they're pulling that student out.
Pulling them out.
There's a lot of different creative ways they're utilizing it. But I think the thing that you can see on this is, and the reason I said that to Denise is I know that she real, has lived in the world where we didn't have as many of those resources. So I just heard it to see some of that. Because I do think you guys have done a very nice job in, again, pushing us to make sure that as many of the resources were directly connected to our students.
And Matt, and last thing I want to ask about this is just so I'm understanding the semantics here. I see on here 0.3 coach top box, you know, pass sped allocation, increased FTE allocation. Is it fair to say that, that all of these interventionists, with the exception of where it's noted with a grant, are basically district allocations?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And they may be special education district allocations, title or federal dollar allocations, or just the specific interventionist allocation or regular FTE allocation that you guys provide.
Okay. Okay.
They get creative in doing some of that. And I know it's getting deeper into the weeds, but the reason you see some of those pieces and parts is they learn very quickly that if they put certain staff members into certain pockets, then they don't have to pay as much in the benefits. And so there's just some creative work that's doing, that they do. And sometimes you can generate another half of a teacher by splitting those people up and putting them in the right pockets.
Absolutely. Yeah. I noticed too, Stephen, that on some of those, it looked like some of those interventionists were actually instructional assistants. Am I right, Michelle? Did I see IA beside some of them?
Yeah, so I counted, there are, and I counted those as just a halftime FTE because of that, Denise.
Okay. Right. But then so that, that number out on, in the first column is total full-time certified teacher equivalents.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
But if you have a good instructional assistant, frankly, some of them were educators at one point. If you've got somebody like that who's working for you, you can put, make them an interventionist. And academically you lose nothing, but financially you gain a lot by, by just looking at the people you have in front of you and how much money you have to. Every year it's different how you can spend it. But it's, that, to me, that's amazing that we have that much support.
It's exciting. I think it really is.
It is. And I think the numbers, the numbers are definitely very helpful. But there's, I think there's an individual story behind each of the numbers about why things are distributed, the way that they're distributed and why the schools have made those decisions. So I think that's another piece or layer that isn't told just in looking at the numbers.
And we actually meet with them. Michelle, Gadberry and Val have been meeting with them individually to look at their plans for next year to talk through. Because again, we've got some new principals who want to make sure that they're placing people in the right pots of money so that they can get as much staff as possible. And then helping brainstorm ideas for how to get more services to students. So subject to your questions, that's everything on the agenda.
Anybody got anything?
In general, would you say that our, our teachers and our staff are doing well through this COVID crisis? And I mean, I don't mean functioning well. Are they, are they themselves emotionally doing well through this? Particularly, I think, people who have children at home. They're still trying to work and they've got their own kids. Are you, are you hearing anything about really stressed out teachers or cafeteria people?
Definitely hearing of some individual things and we're trying to help people through that. I think our administrative team has recognized the need to have meetings like this a little bit more frequent. We've, even we've shifted from an administrative side, you know, we typically met monthly. But just given the fact that we're not able to run into schools and check on one another, we're just doing a standing weekly meeting. So I think we've all recognized the need to check in on one another a lot more maybe than we would have just because we're used to passing one another in the hallways. So there's been an intentional effort and that, that's part of the reason, I guess, I was thinking, if we can finish a little bit earlier with NTI, it might be a healthy thing to do so that we can let people not get overwhelmed with the closure of a year and, you know, taking care of families and someone. Because this, this is an additional burden, I think, on everyone involved, an additional challenge. Because you know, we've got all of our parents that are trying to parent, trying to work, trying to teach, trying to do everything that just takes so much longer because of all of the circumstances and restrictions. So we're trying to be much more mindful than maybe we were the first week.
Well, please communicate our appreciation.
Absolutely. And I'll say that. I appreciate you guys being so genuinely concerned about all that. And I know it is appreciated by everyone. I think you guys have done a nice job of making sure we're not just taking care of students, but we're also looking out for our staff. Very much so appreciated.
All right, guys. Anything else? All right. You all keep up the good work. Thank you for the informative session and let us know if you need anything else.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Take care, guys. See you all.